Good evening. And welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, September the 4th at 7:00 PM. We're running a little bit late, sorry, we had a little bit of extra discussion in closed session, and we started our regular meeting. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from the Amazing Love Ministries, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Corey Warshaw. Stand please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening, we remember the words of King Solomon of all, that wisdom is the principal thing, so we pray for wisdom imparted to our mayor, our city council, and all those in authority in our great city. And Heavenly Father, we remember the words of that great song of all America, "America, God shed His grace on thee." We pray also for your great grace upon, again, our mayor, and all the city council, and all those in authority in our city. And we pray for grace upon every one of us, Heavenly Fathers, as we deal with the affairs of our city. And so, Heavenly Father, I speak your grace and your blessing upon every part of our city. Upon, Father, our police officers, that you keep them safe, upon our schools to stay safe, Heavenly Father. And I speak your grace and your blessing upon our businesses, and upon all of our residents, especially, Father, be there anyone in our city, Father, that has experienced recent loss or going through a crisis. God shed His grace on thee. And I speak your blessing, Father, your grace upon our city, in Jesus' name. God bless America, and God bless West Covina. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to our plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Speaker, Attorney, is there anything to report of closed session?
There was direction given on all items in closed session. No reportable action.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is it any change to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no changes to tonight's agenda.
City Clerk, Volkov, please.
Councilman Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Toma.
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Now, we have one presentation, I think I'm going to have our city manager give it up, please.
Good evening, if I can ask, Marcy Medina started heading down. On behalf of the City of West Covina, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and to the audience, we'd like to introduce to you our new Finance Director, Marcy Medina, who started work with the City of West Covina last week. Marcy is a USC Trojan. Ooh. Wow, tough crowd. It only gets better from here, Marcy, trust me. She's a CPA, she's had over 30 years of experience in municipal finance, has worked for the cities of Pico Rivera, Oxnard, Almani, Long Beach, I've got to get my cheat sheet here, Azusa, and Pasadena, most recently at Sierra Madre, where she was the Assistant to the City Manager and Finance Director. But she's held many roles in those different organizations, and we're very lucky to have stolen someone from a local community with these great credentials. So, I'd like to introduce Marcy to everybody, and welcome her to our team. With that, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there's any other presentations this evening. All right, thank you, Marcy.
Now, it's time for oral communication. All those who wish to speak, if you feel out a yellow card, and hand it to our Deputy City Clerk, you'll get five minutes to speak. She'll call you in by order. Okay, it's up to you.
Our first speaker tonight will be Phil Kaufman, followed by Valerie Munoz.
Good evening. Regarding agenda item two, the changes to the method of selection of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. While I absolutely agree with the basic premise of the changes, it was absolutely the right thing to do at the time that there was a change in the mayor, to have Mayor Johnson take over, and Mayor Pro Tem Wu take that position, and that at the time, with the timing of that change, that they should not be penalized, and should be able to complete the current term, and then enjoy their entire full term following the completion of the partial term. But I can see a situation where something like that could happen much earlier in the term, and in effect, a new mayor might have almost two full years, which I think would be incorrect. In the original staff report on this, that of August 21st, 2018, in the discussion section, this was addressed with the statement that the city council may also consider adding a specification regarding the number of months or less than a certain number of months in order for the individual to continue to serve as the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and not require rotation. You know, I can see a situation, you know, where, you know, something could occur, where, you know, the mayor is sworn in one day, and for whatever reason, could win the lottery, move to Tahiti the next day, and the new mayor is, would be there for two full years, which I think is incorrect. I think we need a maximum time limit, and I would think something in the area of maybe four months, five months, something like that. If the term is, is going to be nine, 10 months, seven, eight, nine, 10 months, then I think that's, that's a sufficient term for the mayor, and the, there should be a rotation following the completion of that timeframe. So, I think a time element needs to be added to the changes, to, to the amended selection ordinance. And secondly, we've always had the ordinance state that where, in the order of advancement, that there is, it is in some instances ordered by the number of votes received in the prior election. That was fine at, with at-large voting, but with the advent of districts, I think that really skews the whole situation, and someone who is in a district where there's five or six candidates is at a great disadvantage, as opposed to someone who's in a district where there's only two candidates. And I think one method of fixing that problem may be to use a percentage of the votes rather than a total vote. So, that if you get 51% of the votes in, in a district with more candidates, that is a better measure than just a number of votes, as opposed to someone in a district with, with a different number of candidates. So, I think that, that needs to be looked at before that continues now that we do have districts. So, I think those two things need to be addressed before the, the ordinance is approved.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Again, Valerie Munoz, Councilmember from your neighboring city of La Puente, but most importantly, your representative on the Water Quality Authority. I wanted to bring a few packets, as well as some, an invitation for the groundbreaking ceremony for the Puente Valley Operable Unit, which I'm extremely excited that we have finally come to an agreement with Northrop Grumman, and which will happen, I believe, on the 22nd of November. Yes, actually, Thursday, September 20th, but just really quick, I've been your representative for a little over a year now on the Water Quality Authority, and one of my pledges, when I was coming and seeking the opportunity to represent you and the great city of West Covina, was the keeping you informed, making sure that I'm accessible as well here, and inform you of what my duties are on the Water Quality Authority. In your packet is just a general overview. I had the honor to meet with Mayor Johnson several months ago, and present this same packet, but I felt that it was my obligation to come and present it to the whole city council as well, and just gives you some general statistics and data that you can share with your constituents on the importance of the, what we do on the Water Quality Authority. Just to kind of give you a brief overview, the WQA was created back in 1993 by the California State Legislature, and its issue was to clean up the contaminated aquifers in the San Gabriel Valley. It is the large, it's the nation's largest superfund site to date today, and our current projections, we have cleaned up around 1.3 billion harmful contaminants in our local groundwater. That would be around 81 tons of contamination has been removed. Kind of put it into more of a visual term, that's like filling the Rose Bowl over 5,600 times of contamination that has been removed from the groundwater. We have six San Gabriel, we have six operable units in the San Gabriel Valley, which include Ballon Park, South Almani, Almani, Puente Valley, Whittier Narrows, and Area 3 in Alhambra. To date, and one of the most important things that I want to reemphasize, is that the Water Quality Authority has secured over $500 million in settlements for those responsible for contamination. So, our focus is to make the contaminants, or the people responsible, pay for the cleanup efforts. This is another way to make sure that we keep water fees down, and we do not transfer this fund, or this amount, to our local residents. To date, we have been consistent with 3.7% of state giving monies to the cleanup efforts, local resources of 9.6, federal funding of 12.5, and the responsible parties of 74.2%. So, in the back, that's one of the, it's all broken down for you there as well. Most recent updates is, last year, we were able to settle and sign another agreement with the Ballpark Operable Unit, which lasts until 2027. We secured $225 million in that settlement to make sure that the residents in the San Gabriel Valley water rates do not rise due to groundwater cleanup issues. In addition, the most recent one, and we have an invitation there for the groundbreaking ceremony, was for the Puente Valley Operable Unit. So, all of the operable units that are in the, in our area that we represent and we oversee, the Puente Valley was one of the operable units that had no cleanup efforts whatsoever. It took over 20 years for Northrop Grumman to finally come to a consensus, and we just signed the agreement little, around six, eight months ago, and I really do firmly believe it was due to my efforts of being on the water board, or the, as a board member, and helping put the pressure in regards to that, so we have our groundbreaking. Some key facts of the importance of that is the treatment plant will prevent contaminated groundwaters from mitigating beyond the San Gabriel Valley Water Company, and also, it, it does affect, because we will be solely cleaning up water for La Puente, Basset, Valinda, and parts of West Covina who would utilize this water as well. So, I just wanted to just kind of give an overview once again, invite you, hope to see you all there. It's a great testament to the hard work of the Water Quality Authority, and just working for you and your community. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. The question, okay, basically, okay, we try to clean the underground water, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I think you know, we have BKK, okay, toxic landfill site, okay, and I don't know how safe, okay, the drinking water for the area of underground. I don't know, in your agency, have they checked into the area to make sure ours, okay, resident have a drinking water that be safe? Maybe you can answer us.
I don't have that information right readily available, but I can definitely get that back to you.
Yeah, would you please check into it?
Yes. Can you just repeat again the?
Okay, we have the BKK landfill, okay, on the, okay, south side, there is toxic liquid, okay, and landfill, and that is a concern for our city regarding the underground drinking water. So, since you are the, in the water board representatives, we want to make sure, okay, the surrounding neighborhood, our drinking water in West Covina, with that landfill existing over there, we can have a safe drinking water, since we are 98% of our drinking water is underground.
Yes, absolutely. What I will have Mayor Pro Tem Wu, is I will definitely get back to you. I would have the staff research, and make sure that we have all of the information regarding the request that you, that you're asking the question. Thank you.
Hi, Valerie. One quick question, on the, the funding sources to date, there's a breakdown of the different percentages. What is RPs? Do you know what that is, on the last page?
Responsible parties.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Next speaker is Angie Gillingham, followed by Forrest Wilkins.
Hello, Mayor, City Manager, staff, everyone, City Councilman. I am here representing the WCIA. Just want to remind everyone, the First Candidate Forum will be next Wednesday, the 12th, here in council chambers. It starts at 7:00 for the council, for the actual individuals to speak, but you may come and meet, and have a meet and greet at 6:30 to, in the lobby outside. You'll be able to meet each one of them, and all candidates have responded, so we have in all three districts, all candidates will be in attendance for each of their districts, and they may come and visit on the other two districts, I would hope they would be there. We look forward to everybody coming, and by the way, the city is also providing Charter Spectrum, and also YouTube for the evening, so if you can't make it physically here, you can view it at home, at the comfort of your home. So, anyways, there's a flyer out there, and we hope to see everyone out next Wednesday, the 12th, and the following will be, District 4 will be the 26th, and District 5 will be October 10th. So, thank you.
Forrest Wilkins, followed by Tim Valades.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council, audience here in the chambers, and those that may be viewing. I'm going to start off and share with Councilman Wu first. Councilman Wu, the other day, I had an opportunity to ask a lady, I said, what do you call Councilman Wu, the other day I had an opportunity to ask a lady, I said, "What do you call a bear with no teeth?" And she didn't stop for a middle second to give me the answer. She said, "My husband." Come on, it's funny. I laughed at it, caught me off guard. The correct answer is a gummy bear. Anyway, moving on to what I came here for. Evidently, I left a little too soon, the last council meeting. In the following day or two, I read in the Tribune where the city of West Covina settled an undisclosed amount of money for a prior police officer here. The police officer came from LAPD, and I think he had about seven years' experience. And I've heard the neighborhood of $1 million to $2 million, the settlement was. Now, I understand, I don't have the actual facts, but this is something that raises some red flags. In my career with the Los Angeles Police Department, I spent seven years as a training officer. There are certain protocols you go through as a training officer. If you're a training officer and you're probationary, your first year on the job, you're a probationer. Every month, the training officer is making out your progress. If you're doing well, if you're not doing well, some areas you need a little more exposure and so forth. And then besides a training officer, there's a supervisor that's supposed to be reviewing that. So that would be a sergeant level. And then after that, there's usually a lieutenant that oversees that. And so in our department here in West Covina, I would imagine a captain would be overseeing that. So if this prior officer was complaining about some remarks that were made to him, why wasn't that noted? One rumor I heard was that he was complaining because he was referred to as a ghetto officer. Well, if he came from LA and he worked the south end of town, that's common language is you work the ghetto. So what's so offensive about being a ghetto officer? If it's directed him specifically because of maybe of his ethnicity or something, well that can be a problem. But if that was just it, and if the city attorney can't defend that, well, maybe we should revisit the city attorney. But my whole point is, I'm not happy as a citizen of West Covina paying undisclosed amount, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 to $2 million. Why wasn't there a check system? So I think that there should be an independent investigation on this officer's situation. Who was his training officer? Who was his supervisor? Who were the lieutenants? And who were the captains? Why did this go to this point where we're expending that amount of money? And I would appreciate comments from each one of you after oral communications. I think this is a serious issue. As you know, we're not in the greatest financial straits, and we're expending or throwing $2 million away for an out-of-court settlement. That's not good. I look forward to comments from each of you. Thank you.
Tim Valades, followed by Anna Montane Munoz.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor, thank the council for their time this evening. Over a 20-year resident here in West Covina, and I'm here tonight for a couple reasons. I have some general issues going on in my neighborhood that I'd like to see addressed, and the department, this is gonna fall under, I think it's formerly, it's Community Enhancement, formerly Code Enforcement. And 20 years ago, when I first moved here, Code Enforcement was a little, quite a bit more proactive than they are now. Unfortunately, the city needs to be a big brother for some residents that are not even maintaining general standards. And I'm here to let the council know, maybe they can readdress some of the issues or the Code Enforcement's or Community Enhancement's efforts. And I know, you know, back, I think in '08 or '09, the budget was cut, so they really cut staffing down. And it's making a difference in different areas of the city. Some of the general issues I'm having are just general housekeeping, yard maintenance or lack of it, debris in the backyard, and then more specifically for me, it's a lot of dumping in the back alley. The residents are dumping in the alley and just leaving this stuff there for other people to address. And of course, the associated problems that come with all this debris in their yards and in the alley. Again, the second reason I'm here is I have a more specific issue I can address directly with the enforcement officer. I can give them the specific information, and the reason I'm here is because I'm hoping that this can get addressed properly in a reasonable manner. That's why I came here this evening. And also, I think really reevaluate that, in the long run, that'll help maintain higher property values for the city. Right here off of Cameron, off of Cameron and Glendora. A lot of times I end up calling, and they just, you know, they send some city official, somebody from the city yard to come pick up, but I go, "That's not solving our problem. It needs to be addressed with the individuals," so.
It is code enforcement, yeah. If I can interrupt, I know Chief Mark Taylor here, Code Enforcement is under the Police Department. So before you leave, he'll give you his card or one of his captains that are here and make sure they follow up with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anna Montane Munoz, followed by Dave Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm back again. I'm back again because I believe that I can make a difference, and the community members of our, of our West Covina can also make a difference. As you may already know, we have serious issues in our community. One particular issue that is currently affecting the morale of our community and security is vagrancy. Not necessarily the homelessness, as I know that has been an issue that is definitely being addressed, but more of vagrancy. Over the past years, there has been an increase in crime. Community establishments are no longer enjoyable. Places that we considered family environments, such as parks, are now littered with feces, drug paraphernalia, shopping carts, and an abundance of trash. People have reported lewd acts behind the Vons, Target, Dollar Tree, McDonald's, and other family environments. I asked several 10-year-olds about what they see in our city. They are observing. And this is what some had to say. At Walmerato Park, there are so many homeless people that are on drugs. It makes me not feel safe there. I'm sorry, I'm shaking a lot. I'm really passionate about this. I love West Covina, it is my home, but when I see homeless people when I'm driving, I get worried. Two times when I went to West Covina Park, I saw a container filled with drugs, and I saw a pack of cigarettes on the floor. One time at Walmerato Park, there was this homeless drunk guy who was yelling at a little girl for no reason. I have seen many of the homeless smoking and others looking like they're crazy, so I'm afraid of the worst happening to my family. One day, my grandma stopped to walk the dog around a nearby park. Some homeless man came up and said to my family and asked, "Can I have some money?" We said no and rolled up the window. Then he began, began to bang against the car window. Parks in West Covina, there's homeless people, and they look so scary to me. When I go to the park, I think they need help to live somewhere. I want the homeless population to be helped at parks, so kids can keep playing and parents don't have to worry. I could have gotten more, I got just a few 9, 10-year-olds. I believe that you all consider our children important. So I have three questions. The first one is, many people think that the city council is not addressing the issues. The city is not addressing vagrancy in particular. I think that there needs to be more communication to let the community know that something is being done. In doing so, I think that allowing the community members to know, what is a directive given to police officers? What is it that they are to do in situations when there are people committing lewd acts, using drugs in family environments? And even, I was appalled to see this one man using the restroom on a bus stop bench in front of the Hong Kong Plaza. So what is a directive being given to police officers? And not only that, I know that this is not just your problem, it is our problem as well. So what can we as a community do to help alleviate this situation? I really want us to come together to find a solution. Tomorrow, there is a Take Back Our Community event at the district office in West Covina, at the West Covina District Office at 6:30. I hope that you can all attend, and if you can't answer some of the questions, the three questions I asked today, if you can attend tomorrow. And be more transparent, communicate what the city is intending on doing, what the police officers are doing, and how we can help our community. Thank you.
Dave Stewart, followed by Frederick Sykes.
Greetings, council, staff, fellow residents. My first goal up here is to beat the clock tonight. I always get beeped, I feel like I'm in the Gong Show, but here I go. First of all, most of you probably know that the West Covina Oversight Board disbanded on July 1st. And any future things that are unfinished will go to the County Board of Oversight Board. The reason I mentioned this, I wanted to thank the mayors for appointing me. The first one was actually, I was appointed originally by Mayor Sykes, and then I was reappointed by Mayor Toma, and Mayor Worshaw, Mayor Spence, and I think Lloyd probably had to sign me on, I don't know if he had any meetings or not. But anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for, it was a very interesting time, you know, being a long resident of the community, while I had a pretty good background, but I learned a lot of things about the city that was very interesting. The number two thing is, Azusa Avenue between the 10 freeway and Francis Kito, the center median, I realize it's a state highway, State Highway 39, but if I'm not mistaken, do we take care of the median? Okay, the reason we take care of the median is, a few years ago, we were given a grant order, what you might call by the state, I think it was $250,000 for us to take care of the median, which at that time was a good deal for the state, and it's a bad deal for us, because I think we've taken it care of forever, and it's probably, the money's used up. But what I'm saying is, there's trees there, but they're all different sizes and shapes. There's absolutely no shrub, it's all dirt. It's a gateway to our city. And all the way down to Rhine Avenue, there is recycled water, but the plants in there are either completely dead or half-dead. And there's electricity on the trees, there's no lights. But what I'm saying is, it seems like we could do a better job on it. It looks really bad. Basically, it's 99% dirt and some trees that are out of shape and a few weeds. That's something we can take care of. I mean, that was a good deal for the council that accepted that money, because they probably had it for a slush fund or something, but it's long gone, and we got stuck, you got stuck, and the residents got stuck for the rest of it, whatever. And the third thing is, I've got, we have, you know, the Code Enforcement is very, you know, they're very busy, and we don't have enough power, but I have some ideas that might help if you could get some residents involved. Not to the word of the point where it's anything that they have to do particularly, but I have some ideas, because a few years ago, I did a little thing with, when Mayor Hereford was on the thing here, and I checked some, I just did some things on my own. And at first, I said, "West Covina was a city of beautiful homes." And then I come back and one time, I said, "It's a city of some beautiful homes." But after I did my little program that I did, I realized there was more beautiful homes than you think, but there's a lot of them that need help. And I think with a couple of ideas I have with using residents, not getting involved too much, but a couple of ideas, so if anybody was interested in talking to me about it, I'd be happy to talk to you and pervade this onto you. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker for tonight, Frederick Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, 40-year resident, retired LA County Deputy Sheriff, former mayor of West Covina. I am also a member of the LA County Human Relations Commission, and I have been a public servant all of my adult life. Today, I encountered a city employee, he's gonna be pretty soon, he's gonna be a former employee. I recognize this gentleman as being a dedicated, hard-working employee here. And I'm out enjoying my retirement and exercising and walking my dogs, and to have an encounter with him and to have him tell me that this week was his last week of employment after 23 years of serving West Covina. You know, I worked 10 years longer than that employee that I met today and talked to, and those 10 years made a huge difference in my pension benefits and my lifestyle in my retirement years. My pension benefits made it easier for me to run for office and to be a community activist. Gentlemen, these financial problems that we have are severe, and so are the consequences. Consequences are very severe to the people that we serve and also to our city staff. I beg of you to cease and desist with the political gamesmanship. All that kind of activity needs to end, and it needs to end now. And we as a city, to the public, my fellow residents, we need to help find real solutions, both short-term and long-term, to our very severe financial problems. Also, I want to talk about another experience that I had, and it has to do with my neighbors who are renters. Down in the south end, there are a lot of renters of single-family residents. And I asked those tenants to please read their rental and lease agreements, because tenants have rights in California. I asked them to please study and know those rights. And especially when we're referring to single-family residents, I had a tenant that had an issue. And the bottom line is, tenants can post any sign they choose, as long as the tenant complies with California and local laws. California Senate Bill 337 allows tenants to display signs with certain restrictions. And also, the Constitution of the United States, the First Amendment right of the United States is political speech. And Madam Clerk, in regards to that situation, I had a theft of my sign, and I'm submitting to you a formal complaint. Thank you.
Okay, that is our last speaker. Mr. City Manager, you have any comments?
I have a variety, actually. First and foremost, I think that Chief Taylor could come down and talk a little more about Code Enforcement. And as he's coming forward, let me mention a couple of things. First and foremost, what's that? Yeah, well, yeah, you can talk about the homeless issue as well. But under the Code Enforcement, we actually are having volunteers help do some administrative work, and are actually soliciting for Code Enforcement interns right now to help provide additional services. Right now, we have two Code Enforcement officers who are really responding to calls and not being as proactive as we'd like, so we're hoping that the intern program, volunteer program of residents, can help expand that program. So if I see a volunteer in the community that's sitting there with great ideas, perhaps he can volunteer be someone. I get beeped already? Wow! So Chief, if you could talk a little bit more about Code Enforcement, and spend a little bit of time about homeless in the Parks now as well.
Sure. Good evening. So pretty much what Chris said on the Code Enforcement, he took all my thunder, but... So pretty much what Chris said, on the code enforcement, he took all my thunder, but currently, we do have two code enforcement officers, which obviously is a pretty thinly-staffed for a city this size. So what we've done is, we've looked at our volunteers and solicited their help. They're out there every day, driving around. What we're asking them to do is make notification to our people, so that we can get more ground covered, and we can take action on this. Like Chris said, you know, we looked at, how do we get more labor for free? So we looked at developing a specific intern position for code enforcement that will be able to do a lot of their paperwork in the office, which will free them up to allow them to go out and be more proactive in the field. So the Human Resources Department did a great job, they got a flyer together very quick, it's currently posted on our website, and we looked at having maybe two code enforcement interns onboard within the next month, which will really help our people. So the homeless problem in the park, you know, it seems like during the summer months, you know, it expands even more, they're looking for shade, you know, and I understand, you know, it's very troublesome for our residents when they go to the park. But at the same time, as long as there are being the laws, they do have a right to be there. That's the key thing. But, you know, as far as the laws go, you know, we tell our officers, we take a zero-tolerance approach to crimes, in the park, anywhere where, you know, the public is present, we want to make sure there's no drugs, needles, all those things hanging around. We don't want kids to come in contact with that. So we do take a very proactive approach. Currently, we have two officers assigned to our HOPE team, which is the homeless outreach and park enforcement. Again, for a city of our size, two people, kind of thinly-staffed. But when we can, our patrol officers assist in those park checks, and, you know, it's kind of supplement our HOPE team as well. So we are taking, like I say, a very proactive approach to it. Could we use more people, for sure. But we definitely understand that that's a community problem, and we're doing the best we can on it.
Chief, I have a quick question. Okay, I don't think we allow the people to sleep overnight in our park, right?
We do not.
So I went to the Bruin, okay, soccer, okay, opening day, youth, okay, and so basically, I went over there and talking to all the youngsters, they're very happy, but just next to us, it's about 9 o'clock, about 10 o'clock, they have a couple of transient sleep, just very close, about 10 feet away from us. So I think they slept over there overnight. So how you address the issue, okay, if we have people, okay, doing drug, okay, or, okay, sleep overnight in our park, okay, what should we do, okay, since this has become a nuisance, a major issue to us?
Well, we definitely have our officers doing park checks throughout the evening, when they can, based on calls for service. You know, I was looking at our board today, throughout today, we were pretty much at 12 to 14 calls pending a majority of the day. There's just busy times. So, you know, as calls diminish, the officers do try to get out, do the park checks. But one of the things I can say that really help us the most is for people to call us when they see things. So any type of, you know, I think one of the residents talks about, you know, somebody using the restroom on the park bench, or on the bus bench, you know, those kind of things are very important, that we get called. Don't just see it and drive by, let us know, because we're going to get officers out there. That's how we can address it. We can't be anywhere, everywhere, for sure, but the more information we get, we will put that into our queue for calls for service and get out there.
The question I have is, the answer I want to know is, how we face, when we see people sleep overnight in the park, okay, how our officer react, arrest them, or have to boom them out of the park?
Typically, they'll be cited and moved out of the park. They'll be issued a citation.
So we have been exercised this law right now, to make sure we don't have people sleep overnight in our park?
We do.
And make sure people don't do drug, okay, don't do weird thing in our parks?
So if they're just in the park after hours, they would typically be issued a citation, but if they were committing any other crime, if they found any drugs, needles, those type of things, they would be arrested for the appropriate charges.
And currently, we have two bicycle cop, okay, still have the two bicycle cop, and to check around all the 16 park we have?
The two HOPE team people. We've had one person that's been off due to an extended injury. We were supplementing that position over the summer with another officer.
Currently, we only have one, or we still have two?
Right now, there's one working in the field, but at the same time, anybody that he encounters, he has one of our Patrol Beat units that comes to assist.
Just a curiosity, one cop in the dark in the park, is that safe? Normally, they go to a pair, right, cop each other?
So majority of the time, our HOPE team works from 6 o'clock in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. They have specific areas that they know that are problematic, they try to hit those. When we have very specific problems, we can adjust that hour, and we usually pair them up with another officer, so they're not, he's not alone.
And I don't know how this is coordinated, but I know one of the, I think frustrations that some people have is when they call about, like, an encampment, and it turns out that encampment's on county property, or it's Caltrans.
Caltrans.
You know, and I know Caltrans said they were going to get back to us about how they're going to be able to clean that up, that stuff up, I don't know if they have, after the spokesman was here. But how do we coordinate that? Because I think residents get upset when they call someone, and they say, oh, that's not us, you gotta call someone else, you know, and then they get, you know, it's kind of runaround, and I'm sure if they call Caltrans, the council says, oh, that's not us, you know, it's the city, you know, that kind of stuff. So how do we, how do you, how does the department deal with those?
The two officers that work the HOPE team, they have specific phone numbers for their counterparts in the county and at the state level, so they can contact them directly, instead of kind of going through the red tape, or our dispatch calls their dispatch, and then it kind of gets lost somewhere. So we make those referrals, pretty much one-to-one, so we can get a better response from each of the agencies.
Yeah, I guess, you know, if someone calls the police department, though, how does that get routed to the HOPE team? Do they get HOPE?
Yeah, it still goes out, they'll either send them a message, you know, to get the information, or usually, it's a call, maybe jurisdiction's a problem. We'll still send our people out to verify, see what's going on, and then make the proper notification if we can't handle the incident.
Can we get stats on, like, the response time from the county and Caltrans, like, those kinds of issues that they have, like the encampment stuff? Because I think that'd be, I know Caltrans, I forgot, it takes way too long, Caltrans, and the county, just depends, I think, but...
Yeah, we can request those, for sure.
And then, how do, I know, because one of the issues, I think, too, that I know Alfred started by, is the whole misdemeanor thing, when the state redefined misdemeanors, a lot of felonies and misdemeanors? Because you can't arrest people for misdemeanors unless you've actually witnessed them do that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so if someone has a call saying someone did this, and you get out there, and you don't see them doing that, you can't arrest them based on that person's word. Like, previously, you could if it was going to be a felony.
That's correct.
And I don't know how we deal with that, because that's a statewide definition problem, but I think it's important for everybody to realize that's one of the problems.
One of the ways we can combat that is, we can actually take a report, we can submit it to the district attorney's office, if they decide to file on it, they can issue a warrant, and then we can make the arrest. But we can't make the arrest at the time unless it's in our presence.
If the witness take the pictures, will that be enforceable?
No, it still has to be in our presence, so we would collect that information, we would put it into a report, and still submit it to the district attorney's office.
Thank you, Chief. The mental health professional that I think we share with a couple of other cities, can you remind us what the schedule is for that? Is it regular, and is it helpful to know that schedule, or is it more responsive and dependent upon the month?
It kind of depends on the month. It's typically one day a week, we share that with Azusa, Covina, and Glendora, and that mental health professional rides with one of our officers, and they look at specific people that we have had ongoing problems with. And they'll take referrals as well, problem calls, when they hear them come out on the radio. But usually, they're very targeted to the people that we deal with, and they're looking for long-term solutions for that.
If I may add...
Okay, I want to ask, Chief, I know a lot of residents are discouraged, heartbroken, when we see this, we hear it all the time. They say, there's no hope, you know, the homeless are out there, and not just West Covina, all the cities, we're falling apart, we're not keeping up with it, we're unable to contain our parks for the quality of life for our children. So my question is that, if a resident calls the police department and says, at this time, there's somebody here doing drug deals, or there's something going on, what priority is that for the police department? I mean, would that should, I would think, and I would hope that we could, say, hey, you know, that is a high priority, besides, you know, like, a regular one. But to get someone out there as soon as possible, to let the residents know, yes, we do care, we are doing the best we can, to get out there to create, you know, maybe there's a chance we can catch them.
Sure.
What do you say about that?
Typically, that would be a Priority Two call, so we have Priority One, is the highest priority, that's life-threatening emergencies. Priority Two is the next one down, and so that would be some type of misdemeanor, non-emergent call, crime in progress, that type of thing. And then we have Priority Threes, that are typically report calls, things that have already happened, that we'll respond to. But, so that would be a Priority Two, and as soon as there were available officers, they would be dispatched immediately.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other questions?
I have a quick.
Okay.
Just a quick one, okay, and how about, okay, in those hospitals, if we install the camera, okay, one, the camera is not a people monitor, just have, maybe have a memory stick inside, kind of to make sure, okay, if they have a crime committed, then we have some proof, okay? So in that way, we maybe discourage people commit crime over there in our park and some other area. How do you think about that?
There's a lot of cities that actually have cameras in the parks, Redlands is one of them. They actually have cameras that talk back to the people, so they can be controlled from their dispatch center, and when they see things, they can, there's a speaker in the park, they actually voice it out, you know, you're being monitored, that type of thing.
Yeah, my point is that we cannot continue passive, thinking about, this is normal, okay, to have, okay, the quality of life reduced, we have to think about something, okay, we need to have some action to do, something to protect our quality of life, okay? Example, we spent so much money for our park, now park, nobody want to go to, due to it's not safe, and have transient people doing drug. So we need to find something much more enforceable, can protect, okay, our investment for those parks, for our children. So that's why I'm saying, maybe we can think about that, maybe you can recommend some of the issue, okay, while then, we continue to complain, but no action taken.
And I think with cameras, you know, they are a valuable tool, but there's always an offset with privacy issues. You know, you'll have one group that believes in them, other group, you know, the big brothers watching, and they're not necessarily for it, so I think there's a balance that have to be looked at, and, but I think they are useful in the right situations. The only one thing I can say about cameras is that, you know, we just have to remember, if we want an immediate response, that somebody has to monitor that camera.
The one, I know Warner, they have installed a camera, but not monitor, because it costs so much money, but they just have, okay, memory stick inside, just if something happened, or you kind of say something, you have cameras, okay, smart, so at least discourage people commit crime, or do some weird stuff, okay, in our public area, this is something, but again, it's not going to do monitor, due to, it's just way too much money, and just, like you said, big brother watching you. But just something to recording, okay, something, if something happened, we can go back and prosecute the person, or people doing the graffiti, okay? And now, it's like, we, okay, door and, okay, cat, we chasing around, and we just have to cover all the time, but if we have some camera in that area, maybe we discourage people to try to attack, okay? So we can save a lot of money, and just a camera with a memory stick, so we can have maybe license plate, and we can chase the person, okay, to commit this kind of loose act.
That's definitely possible, and most of those camera systems are set up for investigative purposes, not immediate response, because it requires too many people to actually monitor, but it is a good investigative tool.
I know one of the things, I know, like, through our CDBG, you know, we fund things like Cory's Kitchen, and the San Giro Valley Coalition of Homeless, and I don't know if there's anything else, but do we have an update on Measure H funding? Because Measure, no, because Measure H, you know, as everybody knows, was a sales tax increase for the homeless that was passed in the county, but all that money goes to the county. And so unlike most of the funding things where they...
So Mr. Mayor, this item, the city attorney's reminded, this is not an item on the agenda, so we are spending a lot of time and effort on it. If we wish, we can re-agendize it for a future discussion. We could have Ms. Fressiani give an update, since the meeting occurred today.
Okay, that'd be great.
That would be all right?
Yeah, she gave the update, that'd be great. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, and community members, today I had the privilege of attending the County Board of Supervisors meeting, and homeless funding through Measure H was Agenda Item Number 17, which I spoke on, on behalf of the City of West Covina, to, I was spoken support of, the measure, which was going before the Board of Supervisors for funding at the tune of $9 million, over two years. That is for 41 cities to split, there will be an RFP process. That comes out to roughly 1.12% of all of the funding that has been received from Measure H funding. So while I expressed my appreciation, on behalf of the city and the community, for the county doing something, I also advocated that $9 million was simply not enough money to be splitting among the 41 cities who completed homeless plans, and those of you who attend regular meetings know that we came before the council to get approval for that plan. So as of today, my understanding was that measure, that item, did pass for the Board of Supervisors, and so we will be looking at money coming shortly, in terms of how we're supposed to apply and get that funding. So am I happy with the result? I would say, I'm happy that we're taking a step forward, but do I think that that's enough money to be spending in the City of West Covina? No, I did advocate that the Board of Supervisors look at the way that Measure A had been the model, which is about 35%, that comes back to our city, each city, for park improvement, which is to the tune of about $300,000 annually, in addition to maintenance and servicing funds, about 75 or 100,000. So that is more of a model that I would like to see them take an approach at, and all of the cities that were represented that showed up today did advocate for more money, that $9 million, 1% is just not enough money for us to combat the issue locally, and that all of us have unique needs in our community.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any other comments?
I did, a couple more items. One of the speakers had asked questions about improvement of medians on Azusa Avenue. There is a CIP project scheduled for this year to do just that. We are looking to do a portion of Azusa Avenue, a repaving project, and a median project. Now, mind you, it does cost a lot of money to do repaving and median, so we're looking to do a portion of Azusa Avenue this year, and additional funding in future years. But it won't be just Azusa. We, if you recall, for the residents, we did receive a grant from the Upper San Giro Valley Municipal Water District, I think it was $50,000, to do a pilot program out front on Sunset Avenue of drought tolerant landscaping, and so we're looking to replicate that at other medians throughout the city. You know, the common verbiage is brown is a new green, for park spaces and medians, because of the drought and water supply reduction, and we're actually going to be revisiting our parks as well, with our Community Services Department, our local water agencies, because some of them have released some of the drought requirements, while some of the local water districts have still enforced those water restrictions. And so the hope is that we'll be able to provide a little more watering to our parks, and to our medians during this whole process. And then lastly, I will defer to the city attorney, if the council wishes to respond to the discussion about the LEPD settlement, or the issue there.
Did we not read out something on that, after the settlement was signed, or whatever? Don't we read out something on that?
After a settlement agreement is signed, it normally becomes available in part for public. In this case, it was a personnel matter, and so there are exceptions for personnel cases, particularly when it deals with that individual employee's rights. I can say that the settlement figure that was, first of all, my firm didn't handle it, and it was handled by an outside firm, so... Secondly, the figure that you said, 1 to 2 million, is significantly higher than the actual settlement.
Well, that's, I mean, we really can't say what the amount was?
It was $550,000.
Yeah, okay. And, yeah, and I mean, and we don't record a vote on that? Because it was, I know it was a divided vote.
Normally, we don't, when it's not publicly reported out, it's just available, but yes, it was a divided vote. I wasn't there, because my firm didn't handle it. The final thing is that, whenever there are allegations of any kind of misconduct, whether it's at a supervisor level or any kind, there is a follow-up investigation. whether it's at a supervisor level or any kind, there is a follow-up investigation. Those are personnel matters, obviously, and we can't comment publicly about them. But rest assured, if allegations are made like that and they are borne out by an investigation, appropriate action is always taken.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that responds to the questions. You continue the rest of your agenda.
Okay. Is there any other comments by the council on that? If not, we will move to the consent calendar. And Ms. Deputy City Clerk, please take note that Councilman Spence will be voting no on two and four. And then we're going to poll number three, Mayor Pro Tim wants number three poll.
Correct.
It's all yours. Hold on, hold my second. You're going to poll two?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Toma wants two. So let's do, I already said three, let's do three first. No matter.
Why don't we vote on that?
Yeah.
Do we vote first?
Oh.
Vote on the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We're going to, okay, we're, okay, we're going to poll number two. We're going to poll number three. And Councilman Spence will be voting no on four and two.
Well, I will vote.
Okay, okay, for four. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the rest of the consent calendar? Besides those two?
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Spence?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Passage five oh with one as before. Okay, now we should move to, let's do two first.
Okay. Sorry. I just, that was a, a point was made about the, the length of the term. Again, this, this one, this current situation makes sense to me. But I was wondering if there's any ideas with respect to a maximum term, if it were to happen. Does this offer the, I haven't, you know, looked at this in particular because the issue was just raised about if it were to happen shortly after a new mayor gets elected, then it could be almost like a two-year term. Is there, can we work some flexibility into this ordinance? Does it already have this flexibility in there? Or do we need to put a, you know, a maximum of an extra six months? The problem is, I don't know what we do with that actually, the other, the other remaining months. Because if you're saying there's a maximum for a, for any person filling in the spot, then you have to figure out what to do with the, with the remaining months of that term too. If you're saying like, you know, maximum, you can do another, an extra six months. Well, what do you do with the other four months or five months if the person leaves soon? So how would it, all right, well, explain like then, then I'm fine with the maximum. What happens? What if somebody, what if somebody gets a new interim mayor? It's only one month into the new mayor's term. Something were to happen, they can't fulfill their, 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 their period. You don't want to short them, right? The idea is not to short somebody for their, the time that they would normally get in terms of a 12-month term. But then you don't want to give them a 23-month term, right? So what actually, what would happen in that situation under this proposed ordinance?
Under the, this proposed ordinance, regardless of the length of the term that they are filling in lieu of the original person, they would fill that entire term and their entire term. We did offer as an alternative that you could select a certain number of months that would be remaining in, in the term that they are filling, replacing, so that if it was, say, 11 months, you could say, well, 11 months is almost a full term. If it's, if it's only one month in, we don't, the rotation will carry on. But if there's six months or less or two months or less remaining in the current mayor's term, it doesn't matter.
I see. So in the, in the proposal that was the alternative, you would essentially be shorting the person coming in. They would get a month less maybe than what they would otherwise get. And I don't think that's a good idea either, because you're sort of penalizing the person who's coming in and giving them a shorter term than what they would ordinarily serve otherwise. So I guess in terms of the, the two, I prefer to have it the way that it reads now. I don't know if anyone else has any idea about it.
I personally feel if it happens within the first 30 days, you know, you're only, you're only talking a month. And so they would serve for 11 months. After that, they would end up serving for 23 months max.
Well, I know that's an interesting topic on the month stuff. The one thing that's going to happen in nine weeks is that we're going to have elections in three districts. And in two of those districts, there's only two candidates. And in one of those districts, there's five. And the current ordinance, it's based on votes that, at large. And I've been pointing this out, but we need to find a way to figure out that rotation before those votes come in and that election takes place. And then people can, can try to figure out who goes where, if we're going to do this fairly, because you're going to have probably for sure, District Five will be much shorter than the other two districts. And, and we don't know what those vote counts are going to be. And so that part of the ordinance is going to happen nine weeks. And so we do have to figure out something. I think we should do it before the election, figure out what the process is going to be, rather than wait till afterwards where people can figure out where they are on, based on the vote counts.
I see something?
I'm not sure percentages works because I think you still have the same problem. You know, I still think you have the same problem. But there has to be a way to do it other than that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I think we already discussed this last time. I don't think we should waste more time to discuss this. Something, something we already told three, two approve. And then if somebody, okay, they become a mayor, okay, and then within 30 days, it's like something happened, approved, this, that, and the following person will become a mayor. I think that's it. Okay, this is something I don't really need to change. Okay. And hopefully this thing don't happen. But if this really happened, again, mayor, just a ceremonial, it's not really, okay, still one vote for everybody. Okay. So if it's a 22, okay, months or 23 months or even 24 months, I'm, I'm really have no problem. Okay. But Mr. Johnson, okay, and he had this situation and then he would be a mayor next year. I'm 100% for, forward. I don't think he should get show changed by, okay, this turn. Okay. And, and again, again, I don't think this Mary, okay, this mayor thing is really such an important thing. Okay. It's still, everybody's one vote. Okay. Still getting majority. Okay. And if somebody want to serve longer due to the situation, then go ahead. Okay. Then to serve, okay, even, okay, most of people shouldn't have any issue. So I would think about just keep it same like before. And regarding, okay, who will get this and that, let the new council after November, let them to decide. Okay. I think people will be very civilized to decide what they want to do. Okay. And let them to new mandate to decide, okay, future. Okay. And, okay, and this will be very easy to be resolved. Okay. Thank you.
So if the only other alternative is to short the next person, I actually don't like that alternative. I'm, I prefer the, the one that, that we pass. Maybe someone can come along with a brighter idea after the elections and think of a better way to solve that. But I don't want to give somebody 11 months through no fault of their own when they would have been entitled to a full year otherwise. So I'm, I'm fine with the, with the one that we have.
Okay, do you want to make a motion on number two since you folded?
Yep. Okay, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 2444 on second reading.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's a roll call, please.
I want to say, this is exactly the problem with going to districts. What we just saw here was that you have one district that clearly is going to be shorted, and the rest of the districts, not a word about it. Not a word about it. You don't care. But this is the problem when you start pitting districts against districts. And, and that the ordinance that we currently have, short changes District Two, and, and no one wants to talk about it. No one wants to deal with it. You say, let the new council deal with it. Now's the time to deal with it. We're dealing with all the other stuff. That's, we needed to do this a year ago when I brought it up a year ago too, the same potential problem before we even knew how many candidates there were. But, you know, District Two's being shorted. And this is exactly the problem with districts. If you don't want to know the problem with districts, that's what's happening. You're just going to pit people against people. And that's exactly what this is happening here, ignoring what's happening in District Two. I'm going to be voting no.
Roll call, please.
Before the roll call, go ahead and read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number two, four, 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 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, admitting section two dash two one of Article Two of Chapter Two of the West Covina Municipal Code related to the mayor selection process. Spence?
No.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
No.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Passage three, two. Okay, item number three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. And the reason I pulled this out, okay, maybe the city manager can explain to us regarding how many consultant, okay, that potential we're going to hire will come from our general fund. Okay. I think the issue I have is, okay, we have the budget crunch. And I really do not want to more money, okay, spent from our general fund for not necessarily, we really have this consultant. I know everything's necessary, everything is needed. Okay. But, but due to the current situation, we really to look into any consultant we potentially will hire will come from general fund. So let's, how much you propose for next year, okay, budget, that the consultant fee that will be. And second thing will be, if anything is not come general fund, is this a restricted fund or this paid by the developer, I'm, I'm really okay. Okay. Meaning you want to make that thing faster. So developer wanting to pay for outside, okay, and to make, okay, all the plan check faster. Okay. And this is, we already have this in place. I think it's fine because time is the money. So in that way, we can make sure we can have a happy customer and continue inject money to our city. But other than that, anything regarding general fund, we do have an issue, maybe you can explain to us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of City Council. City staff is the one actually presented item number three for the City Council and for the public. Because over the last, you know, several months, there's been discussions about the consultants utilized by the city. Mayor Pro Tim Wu's comments, he and I had a chance to speak a little bit earlier today. And so was able to do a little bit more research. The list of consultants that we have listed here is to provide a variety of different services. Okay. Usually they're broken down into a variety of categories, which are either paid through the general fund or special funds, as Mr. Wu alluded to, but also the type of services. Okay. There's many consultants we have on this list that are actually reimbursed by fees that we collect as a city. So a good example of that is HDL provides, one of the services they provide to the city is to do our business license program. Okay. We charge a consultant, they charge us a consultant fee to do that work. But that is offset by the revenues generated from the business license program. Okay. So that's one category. Okay. Then we have others that are not reimbursable at all, but it's a service we provide using general fund. A good example of that is listed in the report, talks about the regions of University of California for continuing education for our police and our fire department, our EMT and paramedic training. That's about $52,000 a year. There's no offsetting revenue that is generated from that. All right. Then there is, as Mr. Wu talked about, an applicant paying for services. So we have about $335,000 of general fund dollars that have been earmarked. And what I mean by earmark is we have consultants on retainer to that dollar amount to provide services that are reimbursed to the city. And you may have an applicant come in here and say that they wish to, you know, do a, a good example is the Plaza West Covina. As part of their expansion, they're going to need to do a sequoia document. All right. We have a retainer with a firm onboard already to do sequoia work for the city for that type of development and gets reimbursed by the applicant. So we have over $330,000 of those type of general fund consultants. The big one we've had this past year is about $480,000. And that's been for temporary staffing. Okay, that's for, we haven't had a finance director in well over a year. We haven't had a public works director in a while. So those type of funds, our programs are, we see, kind of say at the light at the end of the tunnel. We provide that temporary service. At the end of the day, those services go away. All right. In addition, we have consultants that come onboard in general fund that are specifically to a project. All right. So a good example is, you know, you may hire for the Orange with Soccer Complex, a consultant that helps put that project together and make sure that the different contractors and subcontractors are all working together. When that project's done, that contractor goes away. In fiscal year 1819, we have approximately $1.3 million of general fund dollars earmarked for consultants. All right. So I'm going to try and break that down a little bit, of what that 1.3 million is. $480,000 of it was for part-time staff or is for part-time staff. Okay, so almost half of that. And again, as we fill positions or continue restructuring that we wish to do, many of those consultants go away. Okay. About $330,000 of general fund applicants that are, excuse me, consultants that are paid by applicants. So that's not a fiscal impact to the city. It gets reimbursed. And then $227,000 is when there's another provider providing that service, but they're generating revenue for us. Again, I go back to HDL and the, the business license or Whitman Enterprises. We pay Whitman to do the collection services for our ambulance program. Okay. So those are things that help offset those costs.
Oh, thank you.
Nicole, she has some of them up there to help me out. And then lastly, about $290,000 is where we don't get any reimbursement. And some of those are going to be, you know, for example, every year, we have to get an audit done. Audits are expensive. Okay. So we have that conducted. There's many other items that are required by state law that we have to get audited, that we don't get reimbursed for. We're going to be having before you here shortly, we have to get our OPEB and our PARs, plans, actuarial reports. What that is, is what is the financial responsibility of the city for future obligations for retiree medical and other retirement programs for our retirees. One of the items that was on the agenda this evening was Chandler Investments. Okay. The city actually tonight, one of their actions eliminated a consultant because their services were not providing us the, the benefit that we were hoping for. And so therefore, we didn't want to continue their services because we could generate the same amount of income from staff doing the work rather than having consultants do the work. So we're constantly evaluating those. And, you know, based on the comments from the members of the public and from the City Council, staff is quite understanding of the need and to move away from consultants. I think I brought up during the budget process, Will Dan, which does a lot of work for us as an engineering firm. Some of that includes the annual reports for the various maintenance districts. That is one of the things we're now going to be moving in-house. Will Dan has done the initial report, and now we have a template that staff can use every year with modifications, of course, because we found some errors as we're going through the process. The staff can now do that work in-house. And so that's another benefit of having the consultants come in here, do a project at one point, and then we can move on. And so in here is just a list of the various programs. Again, a lot of these will be programs that were required by law to do. And I can go through each one if you like. And we go through them, it's up to the council.
So basically, the 2018, 19, okay, budget, the projections, okay, our consultant fee come off our general fund, that's based on what you say, it would be roughly around $1.3 million, rather than $2 to $3 million. Okay. And this, you for sure, you cut, okay, make sure to the bone that, that due to the current situation, we're not going to continue to spend the money to consultants. So this $1.3 million is a must based on what you say?
Well, again, I would say it's a must as far as the council has agreed to these agreements with most of these folks. And what I mean by that, I'm not trying to pass the burden on to the council. But many of these programs are in place to benefit the, the organization.
So, so basically, based on what you say, we are not going to exist more than $1.3 million from general fund from consulting fee?
At this time, that's correct.
At this time?
Correct.
So, so maybe you might have something pop out, then we'll come bring to us to approve. Okay. And due to situation happen, we, we might have to hire consultant.
Right. A good example is if the Plaza moves forward, Plaza West Covina, or another development on the BK Keegan landfill, and you need to bring somebody in to do an expertise.
Understand. But that's what should be paid by the developer, right?
That would be, yes, that would be the requirement.
So that's basically, it's not come from our general fund. There would be request for them to spend the money if you don't want to develop. Okay. Right. So, so my, my point is, is the money coming from our general fund, and basically, we cannot get reimbursed. Okay. And that would be totally out of the door.
Sure.
That's my point. Okay. I just want to, if money can come back, I have no problem. Okay. We, we spend and they reimburse back to us. But the money I'm concerned is the money we spend and they basically wasted. Okay. Or we spend it. Not necessarily wasted, but maybe we not necessarily to have to the consultant, we can be using our staff. Okay. Like you say, you already have a template, we utilize and have our staff to work on it. So we continue, we have something in-house, rather than continue to spend the money to the, to the outsider. That's, that's my point.
I think that's absolutely correct. And we're moving towards that. I will caution that, you know, as we're doing additional restructuring, you may see additional contracts coming before you to contract other services that we may wish to do as we move forward with different projects.
So this $1.3 million absolutely not going to reimburse back. This is the hard cost.
No, 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 no. I think that I stated that approximately 300,000 of it is not reimbursable.
So, so basically, for future consultant, there will be $300,000, the hard cost, okay, we cannot get reimbursed. And the rest of consultant, we should get the money back.
Either reimbursed or they're going to be, their services will be used up.
It's on the, on the record. Okay.
I know. That's what I'm trying to be careful how I stay it, say it. So because again, it depends on
I will rewind to
I understand. And no, we've been quite clear, you know, we're trying to finish up projects now. One of them was approved on the agenda this evening is the IT infrastructure improvements. Try and get those all wrapped up so that way we can move on. But I want to make sure that, you know, when we talk about staffing, we, we do know that we have staffing challenges. And as people leave in certain positions, we will backfill with consultants with council approval.
Okay. Thank you so much. So $200,000, the most you can spend.
No, thank you.
Okay, that was your item. You want to move it? Or what do you want to do?
Yeah, move to approve for $200,000, the most you can spend.
It's a receive and file. What's that?
It's a receive and file.
So as we see a
Yeah, no, part, yeah.
No, I'm serious. I'm serious. Like, that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm serious. The, you mentioned 480 of that was part-time staff.
I'm, I'm serious, the, you mentioned four eighty of that was part-time staff. We're not going to get reimbursed for that.
Correct.
Right, so.
Right. No, again, we're not asking for any approvals, you've already made the approvals. So this is just an update for the council and the public's benefit.
Okay, he's made a motion, receive and file, I'll second. Roll call, please.
Spence?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye, passage five oh. Okay, that's the end of the consent calendar, now we should go to Department Regular Matters, the Finance Department. City manager, who's your?
I'm going to go ahead and give that brief report, since I'm the one that had the interaction with the auditors. A few weeks ago, our city auditors came into City Hall as part of their preparation of the annual audit and one of the questions they asked city staff was, do we have a city policy and ordinance in place authorizing who would be the folks that are on the checks for the city, the actual signatories? And they said that, you know, some cities have chosen to do that and something that they recommend. I've talked to the city attorney, state law already says that the mayor has the authority under state law to sign all checks on behalf of the city and in the municipal code, that authority has also been delegated to myself. What I thought was appropriate is, is that, you know, in order to make the auditors happy for the future, we'll introduce an ordinance this evening if the council wishes, having where is the mayor and the finance director on the checks, so it keeps a little bit of separation between the mayor and I and then I'm the backup should the finance director be unavailable. And with that, we're just looking to introduce the ordinance and say, who's the names on the checks?